And this is the signature of Jessica. She's our local board. She's our local board. I guess this is her.
Yes, it's me.
Oh, she's already here. You know where it is here?
Yeah.
Absolutely. We're just a fire. We've got to make sure we keep you going.
All right, I'd like to call a order. The North Canton City Council meeting Monday, September 9th at 7:00 PM. I'm sorry. Open prayer. Date.
Sure. Yes, yes, sir Lord. We thank you all for, uh, we thank everyone for coming here tonight to the state of the city and now for our council meeting. And, uh, we just ask that you bless all of those present and you bless all of their families. And you bless all of the families in the city of North Canton. And then you give wisdom and discernment to all of our leaders so that they can make the best decisions to serve the greater good of our people. We pray this in your name, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, please call a order.
Yes.
Uh, member Keesley.
Here.
Member Warren.
Here.
Full.
Here.
Member Hughes.
Here.
Member Fontaine.
Here.
Member Revo.
Here.
Six present. Thank you, may I have a motion to second? Excuse me, members around.
Absolutely.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right, thank you. For your consideration, uh, the motion is second to approve as presented. Special committee, the whole meeting minutes, August 19th, 2019. Council meeting minutes, August 26th, 2019. Financial reports, August 2019. Motion to approve, yes, your name.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. Also, I missed what you're hearing. Uh, motion is second to approve acceptance of the fee program for self-contained breathing apparatus and approve the memorandum of understanding of the Stark County Sheriff's Office for OVI task force. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right, this time, first to address council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, everyone.
Father Kirk, 1127 East Maple, North Canton, Ohio. Uh, last Thursday, I sent a follow-up email to seven members of council as well as the mayor and the city administrator. Let me read it and now I quote. On Monday, January 14th, 2019, council passed the third reading for ordinance 70-2018. I would request each of you as government representatives, read this legislation, then walk the drive to North Canton and please reply, reply by an email your findings in regard to this ordinance. What were your thoughts and mindset as you voted to approve this ordinance? I walked daily, primarily in Ward 2, and find the conscience of this ordinance hideous and an insult to those who have some self-pride in their surroundings. Housing stock. What the heck is housing stock? Who is responsible for monitoring legislation when it becomes an ordinance? Somebody is ailing the system. End quote. Unfortunately, but to no surprise, at the time of this writing tonight, of writing tonight's remarks late Sunday evening, only two representatives have responded to my request. One very thanking for my email. I don't know if he was thanking me because, uh, uh, he thought, uh, that my concerns were verified or right, or he was thanking me for being kind of ignorant, thinking that council members would actually respond to me. And the other one with the phone call generated a good conversation about city government. That focuses roughly a response of 22% to whom this email was intended. Am I discouraged with a 22% response? No. Now, what's wrong with city government today? On June 22nd, 24th, Mrs. Warren and her remarks at the end of the council meeting insinuated that folks stand up here to throw city council and the Lord government representatives under the bus. Far from it. Far from it, Mrs. Warren. You threw yourself under the bus, said to me, when you told me you went and reviewed the city charter to see how many meetings we have to attend. You throw everybody under the bus because you check, how many meetings do I have to attend? And then two weeks later, you miss the next meeting and extend your summer break by another week. Yeah, so be it, right? So be it.
Vacation happens.
Vacation, yeah, vacation happens. But why would you check the city charter?
You're wrong.
Huh?
You're wrong.
I'm wrong? No, I'm just telling you, that's as plain of a response as Mr. Peterson, Mr. Peters did in, uh, June of 2017, when he called all lawmakers crooks and criminals, and then I read off the minutes and he called me alive. Great. Absolutely great government. Absolutely great. Then we have Mrs. Keesley coming back from summer vacation. She misses the first meeting after summer recess.
Larry, I was all peeping and pooping, so.
I'm, I'm just saying, you come to the next meeting, you come to the next meeting.
You know.
No, let, let us finish, please.
You come to the next meeting and you have to turn your chairmanship over to Serena because you didn't know what was happening, but yet you voted yes for the, for the approval of the, of the legislation. Just saying.
Just saying.
Just saying. Yeah, I'm square a bit too.
Oh, no.
I'm, I'm square a bit too. Thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Some of you may remember me. Patricia Shemensky, 204 Sutton Avenue Northeast, North Canton, Ohio.
Wait, I, excuse me. Can, can you spell your name and state your address again?
It's Shemensky, S-H-E-M-E-N-S-K-I, 204 Sutton Avenue Northeast, North Canton, Ohio. Been there for 49 years. Somebody may remember when I complained about the nuisance. I'm still complaining about those, but right now it's the new North Canton post office, which I know everybody was so happy to get a new post office after a year, but it's got a lot of problems. It's got a lot of, it is not easily handicapped accessible. I am 77, I have neuropathy in my feet, I have walking balance issues, my husband, baby one, has Parkinson's, Vietnam vet with disabilities, horrible bad thing. He will never be able to use that post office. The handicap parking is way far away there. For those of you not familiar, there's post office, Antonio's Pizza Place and a pet store. Handicap parking is way down at the end, two spaces down there where there's a nature ramp. In front of the post office, there is no curb ramp. The curb is almost six feet high. There is no automatic doors, there is no drop-off box, drive-through drop-off box yet, although they say we're going to be up on it in a month, take another year.
Yes.
Things like that. I talked to, I've sent all of you guys email and only one person responded. I sent emails to Kelly first, September 7th, only one person responded. Very disappointed that I did not hear from even the women. I thought they would empathize, sympathize. Was an older person, I did not hear from them. Uh, I included Representative Anthony Gonzalez on the last email this weekend, only I heard from him today. I have a copy of his email, he is already contacted the North Canton postmaster and somebody else. The North Canton postmaster immediately called me this afternoon and I talked to him. He said, Paul, I'm speaking, I am talking about complaining enough. They don't own that building, as we all know. D-HOP's built that building and it was not built to hold a post office and to accommodate the ADA complaint rules. Hopefully we can change those. Hopefully you guys can work with D-HOP, get a curb ramp in right in front of the post office door. Maybe, maybe, maybe get automatic doors like they have down at the cleaning down in the post office, it's just so nice. You got, you got parking right in front. You got, you got automatic doors, you push the button, the doors go here. I send heavy boxes of books to my great-grandkids and pets. I have to go down to that other post office so I can get in and out. If I use this one here and I'm juggling a big heavy box, 15,000 books, maybe using my key, it's almost impossible to get into the new North Canton post office for somebody like me. I want you to take, take a look at that from an old person, a disabled person's view. Things like that, that can be changed. They're talking about getting a drive-through drop box, they have no idea where they're going to put it. We don't have any right now in North Canton, you can just, you know, you've got to get out of your car. There's one behind City Hall, there's one Weber, then Maple, there's one discount drive door, but you have to get out of your car to access those things. So I hope that, you know, maybe with working with Gonzalez, the postmaster, with D-HOP, things like that, that you guys can do something. See this? Oops, I'm sorry. The fourth skunk in 10 days caught in my backyard. I want the city council to do something, alert the public, do something, put articles out, website, whatever. Please check under your storage shelves, check under your decks, check under your fortune, look to see if anything, I'm paying a fortune to capture animals that live all over my neighborhood, Sutton, Weber, Fire, wherever they're coming from. Skunks, raccoons, possums, things like that. Fourth skunk in 10 days that I'm paying ODMR licensed traffic to catch. That's not right. That's not right. When you get a shed for this, there's something on there about foundation, I don't know, people have to say whether there are foundation, concrete, stone, whatever. They should do that. That's something that should be done in the city. What else can I talk about? I got a minute. Hey, any questions?
How much does it cost to remove this guy?
How much does it cost me to get rid of those scum? I got a ribbon on my side because he carried over the price I was paying. Skip, what's his name that works for the city?
Skip Martin.
Skip Martin. I'm paying him only $35. Some of them charge $100.
Per skunk.
That's per animal, per skunk, raccoon, possum, nuisance animals that have to be taken away and they have to be used in ice. He has to take those away and kill, and he works full-time for O-Dot in another county, so I've got to wait until he done. Like right now, the skunk is still sitting there when I die. But, but that's ridiculous and I'm paying all that money for the whole neighborhood. You guys got to put out some publicity, make sure that somebody builds something like that, they put a solid foundation on it, it can't be for over there. Because all this grid is, different species can live together, skunks and raccoons, you know.
Also, Patricia, as far as the, you bring up a very good point about the post office. So they are definitely going, putting in a drive-up, uh, a drive-up box.
Definitely sometime, who knows when.
Well, and then the thing is, is that they're looking at, yeah, what they're looking at is a place to put it.
Yeah.
So they're, they're, they're thinking right now behind the post office.
Behind, behind, something like that is what Timmy told me, the postmaster told me.
So we're looking at two, we're looking at two locations. One behind the post office and then another one somewhere along Main Street. But in order to have it be a drive-up, you know, you either have to have it in an island and a roadway, or you have to have it on.
I mean, I think Main Street, I think a busy street like that is not good.
But hopefully what we would do is if we'd be in a parking lot, you know, like, uh, we're looking at, um, a place that's entirely accessible, you know, that would be a parking. But if you have another, if you have any other ideas or any other ideas.
The easiest, the easiest one right now is discount drive-by because you can pull up next to their curb, they want to walk like two steps to put them in their box. Other ones, you, you know, you've got to maneuver and move it around and then one, you kind of say, oh, you put that easily.
But if you have a place, because we're, they're open to our recommendations.
Everybody has a place.
Anybody has a recommendation, we, you know, because we're looking at locations.
I mean, I, I went there today just to visit Kermit, there was a couple from Plain Town, an older couple, and they had to drive their car up and get out and they were playing too. And I said, you know, all officials and so on, you're funny guys, all right?
Thanks, Pat.
Yeah, thank you so much. Once we've talked about the postmaster meeting and this will be off, I'll be back.
All righty, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Pat. All right, anyone else wish to address council, please step forward. Address, Mr. Raff.
Yeah, I probably should have brought you one, did you sign the ordinance? What I've handed out is, uh, minutes from a 2011 city council meeting, held by England on, Turk Osborne, 307 Fairview Street, South East, North Canton, Ohio. Um, ordinance six of 2011, and sign by the name, sorry, I didn't show you the copy. This is when you nearly doubled all the permit fees that you're now continuing with and thinking about eliminating, starting to eliminate. Uh, I'm speaking in opposition to 57, 2019. It's been eight years and I guess it's taken a few years for people to, uh, people to hear the unhappiness, but this is added to the issue that you're dealing with now. This is the order of town council, you voted for it, and like everyone, I guarantee now, so nobody has a, any kind of checks and balances up here, everybody just follows the herd. Mr. Revolt, out of the three readings, you were here for one of them. Mr. Peters voted for it. Mr. Foles voted for it. Mrs. Keesley voted for it. This is what you're dealing with now, with the so-called contractors who have come to you complaining about the cement permits. And by the way, the four people that Mr. Serena mentioned aren't even in the concrete business. And I've talked about them. Their, their concerns are being misrepresented. They, they do not like the delays when you call for inspection, uh, the plans reviewed. It isn't the permits and they don't pay the permanent fee anyway. As I told you, permitting provides a very valuable service to homeowners who are, uh, unaware or ignorant of the technicalities of cement law. It requires a knowledge to be able to provide the oversight. And this is the value of permitting. But you need to revert back to the fees that you had back in 2011, and you doubled, nearly doubled all these. Mr. Serena has sort of commented that people were doing concrete work at nights and weekends. Why does everybody sit up there and just let anything that's said stand out as fact? Does anybody up here know of any concrete plants that are open nights and weekends? Uh, Mr. Deory has said, we need to get in line with other communities. Well, I polled, uh, 13 communities and 10 of them require permits and fees for concrete permits specifically. So I don't know what the agenda is up here. Permit fees serve a purpose. They provide reassurance to the homeowners. They protect the neighborhoods. How do you go and make sure that they're complying with setbacks? That's a bit of concern up here when they do a driveway. If you don't even know they're doing a driveway. And you're going to have to come out anyway, why not create a little contract? Because that's what it is. When you require a permit fee, it's a contract that you as a city will provide oversight of the whole operation, the whole process. This is wrong again. You know, where the fees allow contractors to work in the city for a much lower licensing fee, maybe some of them just want to do one C's or two C's jobs for the entire year. And if, right now, you're charging them $150 to be licensed and come into the city, maybe do one or two jobs for the year. That's why you're killing yourself. I think that's about all. Please amend this and let's go about this in a different manner. Thank you.
Make a jump.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address council, please step forward. Okay, moving on, a little business. We have a motion in the second to read by title, only third reading, ordinance 52-19. We have motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Name.
Post, post. Five on. Enormous amendment, chapter 902 sidewalk policy, codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, specifically amended sections 902.01 installation of sidewalks, including same in the emergency. Thank you. Before I turn this over to Tommy, we have, do have enough to pass it on emergency tonight. So should we amend to rule the emergency clause? Just, just give it. Come on forward.
Okay.
How many emergency clauses have, does that, have a hat?
No, we would, we would simply, um, need to edit that out, that it wouldn't be passed on emergency, it would be asked us.
The point of this is a clarification. For the purposes of clarification, I move that the mayor, we amend ordinance 52-2019 striking the emergency clause. Thank you, member Vol. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Um, we talked about this, this is the third reading and it's not an emergency suit of the third reading. And basically, we're revising the criteria into the one of the three baseline criteria is that, um, there'd be a requirement, and this is, um, to do the sidewalk, um, you know, I think these two is more of a sidewalk, I recall.
Greg Robb?
For this.
Thank you.
Testing.
Yes, that's one of the ones we're looking at.
Yeah, so we just need to have one of the criterias, which is listed below, and if you don't have any questions, we can move forward with the third reading.
With that motion.
Yes.
Is there a second?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A second. opposed? Name. Number Foles opposed, pass five on. Thank you, Tommy. All right, may I have a motion in the second to read by title only, third reading, ordinance number 56-19.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Jimmy.
Enormous amendment, chapter 902 sidewalk policy, codified ordinance six of the city of North Canton, specifically amended sections 902.02 consistent sidewalks, 902.03 new sidewalks, and 902.04 participation voluntary requirements to call, Mr. Strackel.
Thank you, Chairman Funt.
So this is a voluntary participation, uh, so the citizen, uh, that has a sidewalk issue, and it's, it's not private sidewalk, it's more in the public areas or approaches, that type of thing. And so they could petition the city administrator, they could perform, they would send the representative about to check out the job, it's a minimum of so much square foot. Um, as long as their funds available, of course, we would split the cost with them upon us coordinating the execution on an efficient manner, so it would save everybody money, then the homeowner paid their half and the city would take care of their half. And this is the third reading, so if you don't have any further questions, I recommend we pass this tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you. We have a motion in the second to read by title only, second reading, ordinance number 57-19.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Kevin.
Enormous amendment, chapter 1171 administrative powers and duties, codified ordinance of the city of North Canton, specifically section 1171.06, scheduled fees pertaining to permits and resource network and private property and public driveway.
Thank you. Chairman Kees.
Yes, and for the record, Mr. Trick, I do understand this legislation, but it was Mark who brought it forward, Mark who did all the work, and I'm letting him take the lead on it. But I do have a question, and maybe Pat can answer this for me. I don't know, maybe Pat can. As we spoke of this legislation, you know, however many times we had it, committee, had it on council, we talked about placing, replacing cement. This is cement that's already currently on the party owner's property and it's just a replacement of the exact same cement. Am I correct?
That's part of it.
But it also entails a new permit. So if somebody is replacing a, um, driveway but wants to do a path, or similar to a path, it has to come with planning or zoning. Um, gonna do a driveway and.
One.
You do something different. Uh, my understanding of this legislation was it was for cement work being done on private property where cement already existed. But when you read this ordinance, it does not say that.
It covers both situations.
So it covers new cement as well.
On private property, correct.
I, I did not get that impression at all. And I read back through some minutes and I'm trying to understand that as well. I don't know that I agree with new cement without permit, because I think that is something that the neighbor, I feel like there should be some guidelines. I shouldn't be able to just go replace a cement path, what the heck of it.
There are guidelines.
But they don't have to go for permit and it doesn't have to be checked, it doesn't, I mean, they just go do it.
But in order to have the, the work done, the contractor has to be registered with the city, correct? And they are aware of our, our code.
There are contractors who are not registered with the city, who do work in the city.
Right.
It isn't necessarily at night or on the weekends, it's just a broad daylight as well. What, what Mark was talking about was on the weekend, uh, this should curb some of the work, because there is a lot of Saturday pourings down there. And they're not necessarily the group of people that we work with.
Well, yeah. There's something that requires, forces people to register with the city. They can choose not to and they run that risk and you can get away with it all the time. But then they're on record with you, who register with the city, they register with every city, every township. And that's the cost of doing business in those communities so that they can be on the approved list. And then they, as they're part of that approved list, they understand the rules and the regulations, And then they, as they're part of that approved list, they understand the rules and the regulations, they generally know that, because they'll take the time to work that by registering with the city.
No, they're not able to catch all unregistered contractors who work in the city, but if they do, a stop work order is issued, and then permit is, registration is doubled, and the permit is doubled.
But if there's no permit to begin with.
Yeah, definitely with this, two parts, one, if you're doing cement work on private property, this is definitely changing direction, that you will no longer need the full permit for your cement work on private property. It's your own property, it's your private business, it doesn't affect anybody else. However, there are other zoning regulations that say, you cannot put, expand your driveway into the front of your house, you can't have more than sixty percent of your backyard covered by a curtain structure, which a pad or a pad would be one. And if someone wanted to just do it on their own, saying, you know what, I'm just going to go put it in there, I'm not going to check if anything, I'm just going to do it. And they find out that they violated a sixty percent rule, and somebody has filed a complaint that affects, affects them, the Deuce's Department, the Deuce's Department, Urban Department would inspect it, and if they found out that, you know what, you have almost, you know, eighty percent of your yard is now a helicopter pad, that's a violation of the rules, and you're going to have to remove, that's the risk they take from not checking into the rules. It's really a focus on what you want your building department to do. Do you want it to be a department that allows for them to spend their private hours to do things in their yard? Or do you want government oversight into it? There have never been, I'm not one of the other communities that take the approach of, we're going to sign on to the liability of your project and make sure that it is right, and it would stand right. No, that's not what we do. This is a private contract between resident, a builder, a business, and a contractor. And if it isn't done to that, to that consumer satisfaction, it's not the city's place to consume that liability and make that right, that's not what we do. We don't want, we don't inspect, we don't inspect that the concrete is right, that it has the right mix, the right temperature. That's not our job. We'll check to see, you know, the fence, are the poles three feet deep, something not doing that, because if they don't, the fence may not hold up in a windshield, it might blow over, so we check that. Basically, on the driveway, we're just looking to see if the forms have been properly constructed, and they poured the cement, there's really nothing to it for what we're about. So as it relates to cement work on private property and the fee structure, we've heard some stuff from earlier, the public speeds regarding this, and whatever the fees were changed to in two thousand and eleven. Yes, fees in two thousand and eleven were mostly inappropriate, they were too low, so they were raised. And, and it was, even us, records of amount of time to do the research today, they haven't looked at since two thousand and eleven. We've recently completed that study, and that was one of the things that I talked to all of you about, that we could do over the break. And in the cement work, we do believe that we are in line with what is happening in other communities. But as it relates to what was specifically mentioned in two thousand and eleven ordinance, electric heating, ventilation, air conditioning, plumbing, we are in line with what is happening in the other communities around the city, and very, you know, good study, what's happening in sort of county with the other communities, and some are lower than where we are in those other areas, and some are higher. We feel that we're right where we need to be on that, so we're not going to recommend any changes, it was one of the things that are adequate as they are now. The other thing that you have to keep in mind, and I know this is difficult to get your hands on, and sometimes it's difficult when you call over to another community and you just ask them what their fee structure is, unless you dig deep into it, you won't find out, for instance, to what extent our other community is subsidizing their building department, the permit department, and how much would it run off for the, just permits inspection. We have historically been an operation that has tried to have the building, the permit department justify its own existence with its permit fees, so that we wouldn't have to be a drain on the general fund. Other communities don't necessarily share that need, they subsidize it with general fund loans to have lower, lower fees. That's not what this was about. And the one thing that I wanted to make sure, was important that when we conduct this analysis and we report back to the city council, that you have a good understanding of what's happening, you don't just drive, the builder has told us that their fee in master is lower, that their fee in master is lower, because they subsidize it with general fund revenue, it's a big difference. So it's a lot more nuanced and complicated, part of a more in-depth analysis, so I'm sorry for transgressing, and I think it gives you a big picture of what we're trying to accomplish. Thank you.
No, I thought that was very effective, and very helpful, there.
You know, as a rural town like seventh decade, kind of epiphany. And that is the one discussion that we're voting, voting vote was not being cast in several. One of the views we've woke up is that we have the ability to experiment. We can take a problem, we can see if we can come up with a better solution, we can try it. If it doesn't work, we can change and go back. There are these votes that I've voted yes on, that I have reservations about, probably going to be few between now and end of year, which one, pick the right one. But the point is, is that, you know, you don't always have all the answers, and that will be informed by facts and by experience. I guess, you know, I sat meetings with the cement contractors, I understood what they were saying, I had a constituent who had problems with the driveway, with her building department, it was a very successful experience, and it might have been much simpler for this individual, and far less expensive to replace his driveway, had he had the proposal in place. So I'm willing to give it a try. We'll work, we'll find out, we're not doing all that many driveways. At the end of the day, this is nineteen ninety, nineteen sixty-five, the Woodport driveway was right at Manhattan. So we can check it out, we can monitor it, we'll hear complaints, and I can assure you that the first person who pours a driveway beyond the legal limit will holler protests, and we force them to saw it half or whatever. But we'll find out. So I'm going, Marshall, I'm going to go.
Okay, I appreciate this comment, you were all very helpful. Now motions are back.
It's our second. Second. All favor.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. At this time, reports, let me introduce three.
Thank you. Um, just heard the mayor in the state of the city talk about what a great community we live in, so today, evidence of that was a group of about thirty little elementary kids just converged upon City Hall, can walk it in, St. Paul's is celebrating, St. Paul's School is celebrating their one hundredth anniversary, so the kids all came down, and brought us a thank you card for being best neighbors, and also were stopping over at the library and other businesses. So the mayor will be over there, and have a proclamation for their one hundredth year. And you know, next Monday, we have a council meeting here, and that was because the room was previously reserved, so the sixteenth, we don't have a council meeting, we'll come back on the twenty-third, so along the lines of proclamations, again, on the twenty-third and at the beginning of the council meeting, the mayor will also be presenting another proclamation for another anniversary of a hundredth year, and that's going to be the RER, RER will be celebrating their one hundredth, so we recognizing them. RER also did give a significant donation to Park Renovation Project at Fitzher Park, so it's really important to the community, and just want to recognize some of that. Along the lines of the Park Renovation Project too, I think we may have mentioned, but I've had people inquire about where we are with that, we did an RFP, and we selected Grand Center Carol to run that project, so we have had one initial meeting, which was really just planning timeline, we'll, we'll begin to talk our design and budget, but they will be handling the park renovation project from a comprehensive standpoint of Fitzher, all that.
Timeline, timeline. Spring of the year. Say that again. Spring of the year.
Right, we should start.
That's it.
Good stuff. That's all I know.
Thank you, Kevin. Chairman, administration.
No report.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, so we're looking at hundred years, we are going to be having this coming year, one hundredth year for our police program. I want you to not mention this, but that'll be, at the end of the year, St. Paul's and the first of all. And, and also I want to thank Ben for putting together a report for the community survey, it was the best report that we've ever had. Yeah, I'm not sure what it is, it sounded like Winston, urgent. Ben, you did a great job on that. And Kevin and Patrick for the state of the city, you go to the best, that's all.
Thank you. Director Law.
No report.
And C N D here, your credit.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a tiny year for us, wrapping up some projects, getting started for winter ones, and also next year's budget. So a couple of things, we had passports at the last meeting, those open W C applications, those will both be submitted Friday by the noon deadline. And another, a grant application, a Disney council action is a vote to Columbus on Monday, and luckily, there's no media source, we're about to get back inside, but presented to ODOT's municipal bridge program, we're going to get a grant in fiscal twenty-two or twenty-three to replace the Columbia construction. If we're successful, that would pay ninety-five percent of construction cost, and six hundred fifty thousand. We're part of the municipal program, it's part of the bridge inspection, which means the legislation is passed, they also got a grant over it. So go down and get a nice powerful presentation and try your luck, those are any exciting stuff.
I'll say anything, good luck.
Good work.
Okay. Number four.
First of all, I don't know if anybody caught it in the state of the city, but Rob this year captured, you're creating sixty percent occupancy or general fund, that's a really astonishing.
Good work, Rob.
I mean, you can talk about it, dollar multiplier, and value of taxpayers, that's, that's pretty incredible, I believe, in terms of management, so I think that's terrific. I think number two is, is I like Rajat the mayor, and his team on the state city, I think as well, certainly the vision is in what in terms of content, very, very good. And I don't mean to throw cold water on that, but while I was away, I caught some news stories that suggest that maybe in some quarters, we don't want to necessarily acknowledge the challenges this community faces, we've got a lot of good things going for us, we have some serious issues as well. We'll discuss those later in the year, or the next year, but we should not think or fool ourselves in believing that what we enjoy today, we will have tomorrow. That it's, it's going to take work and planning and forethought to get to those objectives, to preserve the things that we enjoy. And like, as I said, I, we'll have an opportunity to discuss this down the road, but we do have challenges. And I think we have to, have to be, we have to be, we have to be cognizant that we will need support of the community if we're going to preserve the tech and expand what we have. And that's present.
Will say, thank you very much. Number four.
It's terrific.
Yeah, thank you. Looking for administration, maybe councils, show some leadership, if there's a post office situation. Since we moved council chambers here, or council meetings here, could there be the availability in City Hall parking lot to put a freestanding mailbox in that are public to use? I thought in front of the building would look so nice, I don't think that's the right.
You mean a drive, you're talking about a drive.
I, you know, City Hall, there was some thought and plan to do something similar to that maybe earlier, but I think if we used a parking lot in back, we have a meeting.
City center or the city?
I'm talking about City Hall. Can't we just put an island there and get a post office, you know, receptacle there to use?
No, it's not possible.
It's not a possibility.
It's not a possibility, the, and the reason is two-fold. If you spend some time analyzing the traffic pattern of the existing receptacle that's at City Hall, you realize how much of a, of a safety hazard it is, because more than seventy-five percent of people that use it drive along the sidewalk rather than, they won't get out of their car, they're facing the wrong direction to put the mailbox, they're getting out of their car, leaving their door open, car traveling the right direction to walk around the front to put it in, in my estimation, it's something that should be taken down, because of all the safety hazards that I see there. And as far as in the parking lot, what you end up doing with sacrificing at least ten parking spaces to put in a drive-through, it's facing the proper direction for people to use a receptacle, and that would be completely against the direction they're trying to go of bringing more bodies up to City Hall to utilize the square footage of the parking spaces there. We looked at, you know, in front of the City Hall, we putting a drive-through box up at the, at the front, you could, but people still have to get out of their car, and if they're not willing to get out of their car, and they're not willing to travel in the right direction, is that what we want? Unless somebody is traveling north on Main Street, willing to double cross W O, pull up in front of the drive-through and face the wrong way, people are doing this, I see it every single day.
No, I'm.
As far as the other facility at, at the post office, let's keep in mind, that the post office gave the regulations that they needed compliance with to the public. Okay, so the, the way, what you see today is what the post office has asked for, and that's when we required with them about the other regulations, they responded back through their legal team, they're not required to comply by the rules that they make everybody else comply by. That's just reality. If you don't like it, then we have to call Congresswoman Gonzalez and complain about that. But the, the city doesn't have anything to do with that, and the D H O development doesn't have anything to do with it. That's the post office's guidelines, this is what they asked for, this is what they specifically wanted, ask it to be built that way, and modified in the way that it is, and I'm not disagreeing with any of the residents who, who indicated that shortcoming, but we have to recognize whatever shortcoming lies, which with federal government and the U S Postal Authority.
Ken, that's a great explanation, but I'm still looking, shows some leadership here, you know, the post office isn't going to give that. But do we offer constituents to try to have a drive-through mailbox somewhere? Whether we widen the entrance, or we don't give, you know, a tent parking spots, we figure this out, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, the other situation was a nightmare for years, because they leased the building, the parking lot was a nightmare to get through, I remember former city personnel struggling, trying to find solutions that would help our general public, and that's all I guess you're looking for here. Is there a way we can buy lots somewhere, do something that we can at least put in a drive-through mailbox?
Can you answer your question, sir? There might have been some type of postal service, and as you look at North Canton, drive, a drive-through will likely require the cooperation of the private property owner. The municipality doesn't have the space for that. So that's option number one, got to find a property that's got sufficient real estate where you can put a couple of lots safely. Remember that if there was an accident, the property could have some liability in that situation. The second, of course, is in Patrick's, is figure out postal service makes the decision. And postal service doesn't feel necessarily a sense of urgency when it's making decisions. And that's, and that's a problem.
In fact, it, its legal team cited a two-hundred-year-old case, seriously, the Calhoun versus Maryland was in their, their letter stating it has no obligation to follow local zoning permitting rules. And look, they didn't state that, but looking at the big picture, if the federal government has to come into their city, village, county, parish across the U.S. and then deal with all of those local rules, they've decided that they're going to hold themselves to a high standard. And then that standard will be sufficient to wherever it goes within U.S. territory. And it, it did cause a little bit of delay in the, with the electrical part, because they refused to use our permitting office to get the electrical permit. Those that would want to work with electricity, passed to see the permit, when they didn't see it, they refused to do some work, there was a bit of a delay. But as far as building it, ADA compliant, it was upon the federal government to build that structure to ADA compliance. They did not utilize our permitting, our engineering office whatsoever, and that was at their demand, although we, we offered it. They said, no, thank you, in fact, we don't have to comply. Well, I appreciate the update. I know you worked hard trying to get that within more than Main Street board, or, I appreciate your effort. I can just see the frustration of not being able to address the needs for our residents. And if there's a way we can figure something out, liability-wise aside, I don't know those discussion points, if they happen, to put in a drive-through mailbox, asking to leverage on the remodeler building, they chose not to make any of that accessible. Shame on them. I'm just thinking, there's gotta be a way we can put a drive, drive-up post container for our public to use somehow. If there's a way to do it, that's all, I'm just looking to see what we can reach.
You know, Doug, they've gotta want to put the box out, too, which means that they have to service the floors. And that has to be within the business model. You know, one of the things that's happened over the years is all those, all those boxes disappeared. It used to be on corners, they didn't want to service it.
Oh, remember the ones that were so be up there, like, yeah?
Like four years ago, I know.
Thought one point nobody's brought up is we do have the belt car, you know, Jackson Belt, Belt Car, um, post office, which I know is a little bit further out, but, you know, I, I wonder if, you know, they're looking at it sort of regionally. And we've got Canton, and we've got Jackson Township, and we sort of fall into, you know, that's like a five-ster mile, like, so we're going, we do.
Downtown Canton, they have through the street.
That's a high, right, that's fine. We do have accessible post office, we just don't have on the city limits. And I, I realize that's strange, but don't forget about the Jackson Belt post office. It's, you can access it all very easy to get in and out of, and it does have the drive-up drop box. So, that's just my thought, even though I love the city as well.
That's all, yeah. Thank you. Number Ware?
Um, yeah, I was just gonna say, kinda like saying that you had said, and Captain's story, I saw it, and I had driven by, and I didn't mind my car passed. And I think same with you, I was surprised that federal government doesn't have to follow the same standards. So I appreciate that coming in tonight, and kind of giving us that update, and, and scuff the problem as well. Maybe it would be a nice job to make, it was thorough and complete, and, and just a lot of people, and give a lot of the employees a lot of credit for a lot of the good things that are going on. And Captain, he did the PowerPoint, and it was really cool, and bells and whistles, and it really was, I still will get, so thank you. Mr. Tripp, I, as you know, have kids that go to a school that doesn't get vacation. And I will never, ever apologize in this day and age for going on vacation for one week with my children. But what I do find funny, Mr. Tripp, is that you tend to focus on Marshall and I. And in two thousand nineteen, I feel like you're sexist, and I apologize for you, on your behalf, that you would still act like that at these meetings. But I find it a bit risky that you waste your time along there on Marshall and I. Because trust me, there are other people that miss, and we are able to miss. And there's nobody that is sitting at home watching this. Everybody has great jobs, we all come from different backgrounds, and we're doing a good job in this community. So I would not warn, and your remarks do not bother me. And probably most of us are up here fact-checking you when you do speak, so that's what we're doing. Thank you, Mr. Tripp.
You're very welcome.
Yes.
Check, considerate.
Yes, it's true, yes, it's my turn to speak, thank you.
On a great note, let's all not forget about the Wheels on Wheels fundraiser at Hoover Park this Thursday. The wheel trucks will be there, and it should be a lot of fun, and a great way to raise some money for a great organization that's desperately needing this area, so. Thursday night in Hoover Park, be there.
Don, like, did I ask you?
You did.
My apologies.
The best for last. So anyhow, Rhodes, real quick, Evermark Road, you know, it's closed for sixty days, we're making great progress on the Evermark project. Apple Road, as you know, we're not doing Apple Road, we're just doing the intersection, north to main, we're gonna go east and west and south. Take care of that this season, we're, I think Superior's doing that project, we're waiting on that, that's gonna get done here soon. Also, Glenwood, if you notice, there's the, the north side's a bit on the bumpy side. They got all the steel, they got the gas line stuff, the water's done, all the houses and businesses are hooked up now, so that's good. We're a little behind because of the June and July weather. So, Rob is all over this thing, and they're gonna mill it down on the north side, and re-smooth it out, so that will be as smooth as ice. And so that's moving right along, and also, I wanted to say the State of the City was very good. I streamed her live on Facebook, hopefully, you can email the presentation, because our point looked really well. Because when I was streaming, I couldn't see my screen. So if you email it to me, I'd love to share it, because I think it's important. Because the previous issue I always hear is lack of communication. This is the perfect way to make sure we're getting word out what's really happening, from sitting in one spot and being in this spot.
Thank you for doing that, now.
Thank you very much.
Can you email us all the PowerPoint presentation, that would be awesome, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go out of the corner here on one, you'll, we have an executive session coming up. For those who aren't gonna stick around, how long are we gonna be in executive session? So, I'm gonna jump forward to the September, October meeting schedule. Next week, we have no meeting, September twenty-third will be a regular council meeting. The thirtieth, fifth Monday will be no meeting. October seventh, we have committee of the whole on a public hearing, six four five. October fourteenth, regular council meeting. Then committee of the whole on the twenty-first, and then we will have our budget meeting on the twenty-eighth. And that, I'm very excited. Okay, at this time, I need a motion of second to move into executive session. This is to review negotiations, a bargaining session with the public employees concerning compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. The executive session is not open to the public.
So?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries, we are in executive session.